Good afternoon, colleagues. I'm Nina Trentai-Saisna, Lesley Tureguan. It's back from recess. There was an inquiry that was made, and I'll go ahead and yield to either the speaker to answer the inquiry as proffered by Senator Pedro Terlali or the author of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So during the recess, I got clarification that the issue was with the budget bill, in which, you know, normally what we do is we put continuing appropriations for the agencies. This year, we limited that, and so that's the issue at hand.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Terlali. Is there anybody else on the Speaker Terlali amendment? Speaker Terlali?
Just to remind everyone, so I spoke on my amendment, but it's been passed out now. This is Amendment 284-36, TMT, L5, page 18. That's the amendment I was speaking on.
Anybody else wish to speak on the amendment? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None? Motion carries. Speaker Terlali, you still have the floor. You have one.
Thank you. So I have another amendment together with Senator Jose Pedro Terlali to add a new section to the bill, at the end of the bill, to read, "Notwithstanding any other provision of law, funds appropriated to the Mayor's Council of Guam in fiscal year 2022 from the recycling revolving fund shall not lapse and shall continue to be available until expended." This is to carry over the recycling revolving fund amounts from FY22, which they haven't expended yet, if there's any left. And according to the OFB office representatives who are here, there is some money that's not spent. They were not able to give me an amount yet, but whatever it is, I'm proposing that that just be carried over so that they can continue to use it for these purposes in FY23.
Thank you, Speaker Terlali. Anyone else, anyone wishing to speak on the amendment? If not, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None? Motion carries. Thank you, Speaker Terlali. You still have a couple of minutes. You wish to...
Just to say again that I support the bill, and I thank the sponsor of this bill for all her efforts towards environmental protection and sustainability, and this use of the recycling revolving fund, and efforts to implement zero-waste programs on Guam. Thank you.
Thank you. You're very welcome, Speaker Terlali. Are there anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Senator Sabina, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just was looking over the bill, and I just want to proffer two amendments to ensure that we are in good order. So the first amendment is on page 17, line 10 to 11. And so this is the part where we wanted, the intent was to expand the island-wide cleanup program to include zero-waste initiatives. And so that's new language, and so it needs to be underlined. So this is just to make sure that we are properly...
So if you can motion Senator Perez to ask legal counsel to make the necessary technical corrections?
Okay, and also to allow legal to make technical corrections as well.
On that amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or, Senator, are there any objections? Hearing? None? Motion carries. Senator Perez?
Okay, the second amendment does the same thing. It's in, on page 32, line 10 to 11. So this is the gar part, so it mimics what's happening in the GCA amendment that I just proffered a moment ago. And so this one also is on line 10 to 11, page 32. And so what it does, it adds the zero, it underlines the portion where it says zero-waste initiatives, because that's not currently in the gar.
On the motion, Senator Perez, to have legal do the technical corrections?
Yes, thank you for that. And also to allow legal to make technical corrections.
On the amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None? Motion carries. Senator Perez, you still have the floor for closing.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I want to take this opportunity to thank all my colleagues for the conversation input and support for this very important measure, the Zero Waste Act. I understand this issue is a long time coming. I believe when we were looking for a new landfill, this is something that came up to move towards zero waste, so we don't have to find another community where we place our waste. And so zero waste is the ecological alternative to reducing what we place in landfills. And, you know, really, it's a vision. It's a vision, and one that I believe is achievable, and it must come through empowering our community to make mindful decisions when we purchase things, when we consume things, because it all has an impact, not only on us, our community where we put the waste, but also on communities where we extract the resources from. And so this is, this is an environmental justice issue. And I believe our people are very, you know, thoughtful. We're thoughtful people and caring people, and it's really aligned with our values, I believe. And the time has come too, because now, you know, we're under pressure, because a lot of the markets that normally receive recyclables are not receiving them since the passage of the Basel Convention or the implementation of the Basel Convention. There are less communities out there taking plastics, and rightfully so. I mean, we see in these communities that have been, that allowing plastics to come into their nations, it actually ends up in their waters. It ends up polluting their communities, and we don't want to become like that. We want to take charge. We want to empower our community to see these, the waste as resources, to really create a circular economy. And I invite everyone, everyone, to take part in this, because that's what it's going to take. It's going to take a broad support. It's going to take a coordinated support led by government, led by our community organizations, led by our teachers, led by our mothers, you know, our children even. And, you know, we really need to bring together our visionaries and the people with a passion to make this a reality. And I do see it coming to fruition if we can work together. So I just want to thank all my colleagues for their support, and I look forward to supporting this bill. Sidozmasi.
On the motion to place on the voting file, please.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and I move to place it in the voting file.
To place, if you can read the number, please.
Okay, I move to place Bill 284-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning, substitute on the floor and further amended on the floor into the voting file.
They're reading voting file. Are there any objections? Seeing or hearing? None? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Senator Perez. Colleagues, we are now on Bill 309-36 LS, and I will acknowledge the speaker right now. Speaker Theresa Terlali, you're acknowledged on the main motion of the bill.
Madam Speaker, the Physicians make a motion to place Bill number 309-36 LS, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, onto the third reading file. I'd like to speak on that motion.
Thank you very much, Speaker Terlali. You may proceed.
Thank you. The Physicians' Practice Act Statement of Policy, codified in Section 12202 of Chapter 12, Title 10, Guam Quote Annotated, the obligation of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to the people of Guam. It states, quote, "The practice of medicine is a privilege granted by the people acting through their elected representatives. It is not a natural right of individuals in the interest of public health, safety and welfare, and to protect the public from the unprofessional, improper, incompetent, unlawful, fraudulent and/or deceptive practice of medicine. It is necessary to provide laws and regulations to govern the granting and subsequent use of the privilege to practice medicine. The primary responsibility and obligation of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners is to protect the people of Guam." Again, "The primary responsibility and obligation of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners is to protect the people of Guam," unquote. However, for numerous patients and their families who have gone to the board to seek accountability and justice for alleged medical negligence or improper conduct, this has not been the case. When Bill 309 was written, there was complaints made by people of Guam to the board that some of them had been sitting for years, and they had not been notified, there was no follow-up on their cases to these, to the complainants themselves, and even after requests by those complainants for updates. As one example was Mr. David Lebowski and his family, who had to read about the status of the board investigation into the death of his five-year-old son, Asher, through the media. Mr. Lebowski stated that "this was heartbreaking and a stab to their hearts. I cannot imagine how I would feel if that was my family in their place. I don't believe that is acceptable, and it should never have happened, and we must prevent it from happening again to anyone else." He was not the only one who complained of similar circumstances. We had an oversight hearing when, prior to introduction of this bill, and during that oversight, it was reported that of all the complaints filed from 2018 to 2020, none had an adjudication hearing. And as of, I think it was June, June 2020, eight complaints were made in 20, they reported on, as of October, sorry, October 2021, I think there were 27 complaints without adjudication. There were eight complaints in 2018, which resulted in no violations. All eight resulted in no violations. Out of 16 complaints in 2019, 14 resulted in no violations. There was one pending and one under investigation, but withdrew their application for a license prior to completion of the investigation. Withdrawal of an application while under investigation is automatically reported to the National Practitioners Data Bank. After the public hearing, and at that public hearing, the Health Professional Licensing Office staff that was present promised that they would notify the complainants, and that they were going to implement a process to do that. And I want to report that they have done that, and for the most part, I think that they report at every meeting now, whether they are doing this or not. But this bill would make it a requirement of the board as part of its regular procedures. It is the board that is responsible for the complaints and the adjudication of the complaints or the dismissal of the complaints. So what we're adding to the existing language and statute is that the board, that they shall be acknowledged reports received through phone call and email within 72 hours or through certified mail within seven working days. They shall be promptly informed through phone call and email within 72 hours or through certified email within seven working days of the board's actions, decisions and final disposition. And the prior law, or the current law, only requires notification after final disposition, which wasn't occurring either. But this would add a little bit more, and that is like any action that the board takes during any of its meetings, that they should notify those complainants. It's really just to keep them updated on what has happened in their case. According to a recent report that we received from the Board of Medical Examiners, they are now down, or if you look at their agenda, they're now down to a single digit of complaints that are still pending, as opposed to the numbers that we were seeing back in our oversight hearing. And I'm very glad for this. I want to thank the HPLO staff that has contributed to that. I think there are some new board members on the GBME that have absolutely contributed to that and taken up a lot of the investigations that were pending. And, you know, of course, they finally got through their procurement for attorney. So I'm looking forward to seeing the actual adjudication hearings where those are necessary. So some of the amendments that were made by the committee include, just to be more precise about what prompt means, because we had said they would be promptly notified, and this more particularly describes what would be defined as prompt. And so those were suggestions made by public, who were also complainants to the board, and they were also based on some other practices around the island, including GMH and other areas. So again, this is just one of the bills that were introduced at around the same time after that public hearing, and this one is simply that, to put into statute that the board shall promptly acknowledge reports received, and that they shall report on the actions, decisions and final disposition in the matters. So I ask my colleagues' support, and I want to thank the community who came out, you know, to our oversight hearings, who sent messages to my office or called my office, because I really do believe these are very brave people, that it is not easy to make a complaint against any professional licensing board or any licensed professional member of any board. And so to do that, you know, it takes a lot. But to be completely ignored after that, I think, has really caused some effects on these people. And so I just think this would just be a small part, and that is just, you're mandated to give them feedback. They have to know you've received their report, their complaint, and they have to know if the board made any actions such as dismissal of the complaint. I think that's what Mr. Lebowski found out in the newspaper, that they dismissed his complaint, or they took, or they found no violation. And especially that type of a finding is, you know, I think it's something that you should, you should hear directly from the board when that decision is made. I want to thank the board and the HPLO, because they've implemented a process right now where they list the complaint numbers on their agenda, so those complainants can follow along. And I want to encourage them to continue that practice. I think there was some discussion in their board meeting at one time to remove that, but I think that that is a transparent process, and that's, that's like, it, their numbers. So nobody knows whose case or who was complained about, but that would allow the complainants, those potential victims, to follow along with their own cases. And so I just think these are all measures, and they add to the same transparency of the board's actions, especially in regards to these very serious matters. And I hope I don't have to remind any of you that not all of these complaints are regarding, you know, medical negligence. Recently, several of the complaints have been in regards to sexual misconduct. And I think that's alarming, that these complainants are not going to be told what the status of their cases are. And I've talked to some of these, they, you know, they've testified at our hearings, and you can see that this has really had a significant emotional impact on them. This is part of several bills that I've introduced to address the range of challenges that have impeded the Guam Board of Medical Examiners from adjudicating cases and informing complainants, and fulfilling their mandates to the people of Guam. And I want to thank my colleagues, because in the budget bill, we were able to give the HPLO office a little bit more money. We are, we have worked with these boards to ensure that they are able to procure lawyers to prosecute, hearings officers, investigators, and it's really a matter of them keeping track of the fees that they are generating and using those fees to fulfill their mandates. And most especially, I want to thank those people, those brave people who came out to testify on this bill and in, on the oversight hearings that preceded introduction of this bill. So I would ask my colleagues for their support. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Terlali. Are there anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Anyone wishing to speak on the main motion? Senator Joseph Augustine, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You're not rising in support of this bill. The only thing that really bothers me in the medical profession is how we allow some of our constituents to be victims of folks that have issues where they came from. That's really what is more alarming to me, because we find out that some of them that got complaints on Guam, sure, 72 hours, that's great. Even sooner would be better. But it's just to find out that they have the same issue in the jurisdiction they came from. And that's where maybe we need to figure out a way, and with the oversight, Madam Speaker, the author of this, of this bill, we would hope we can close that door that you can't get employed on Guam until you're cleared. That's one of the, one of the things that we, most of our constituents are concerned about. And for the folks that are already, are ready on Guam, well, if there's a report, you made your bed, sleep on it. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator Augustine. Anyone else? Senator Tello, you are recognized on the main motion.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to speak in favor of Bill 309-36. And I'd like to thank Madam Chair for the chairperson overseeing health, for all the good work she has done, because this bill is the beginning of several other bills that we hear that are coming down the pipeline to address some of the concerns for our public, to ensure that transparency and accountability is set at the front line of anything having to do with healthcare, but of course, the safety of our community as well. You know, I had the opportunity to view the public hearing and read the testimonies from Bill 309-36. It's very concerning when the board has a responsibility, a stipulated in Title 12, Section 12203, Letter B, Number 7, which it says, and I quote, "Receive, review and investigate complaints." That's one of the responsibilities of this board. And if that section says, "Receive, review and investigate complaints," you would think that there would be an outcome. It's only common sense that once you've done these investigations, a review, the findings are submitted to those who complained about the situation. It's common sense. But if we need something in here to make sure they understand completely that the board has a certain amount of time to do it, then this is, like I said, one of several other bills that will be introduced to address the accountability of these boards. And I thank the Speaker for continuing to move in this direction to ensure that our community has the same opportunities as those in the mainland or any other place where healthcare is a priority. So I thank the Speaker again for the opportunity to stand in support of this measure and her work on it, as well as asking my colleagues to please support this measure. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, Senator, it's Agui. Senator Brown, you are recognized on the main motion. Please proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill, Bill 309, and certainly the efforts of our Speaker, Speaker Terlali, and really staying on top of this issue with regards to the Guam Medical Board of Examiners. You know, it's unfortunate, we've had incidences that have been reported and have had to be reported publicly, because individuals in our community that have filed complaints did not feel they were properly notified or that their concerns or complaints that they made were even being heard or addressed in a timely fashion. And certainly, this bill would require a timely notification with regards to their case on decisions that are to be made. There are certain areas, certainly in our lives, that we want to feel safe, or an expectation that we should feel safe and we should feel comfortable. You know, it's like a parent taking care of a child. When you're with your loved ones and your family, you feel a sense of warmth and you feel a sense of safety. When you go to your doctor, that's another time when you, you know, because literally with their expertise kind of, you know, you're, of course, while your physical condition is may not something they might have direct control over rather than to take care of you, you know, depending on what your situation is or what conditions you may have. But you have an expectation when you go see your doctor, that your doctor's going to be professional, they're going to be responsible, and they're going to helpfully give you the best medical advice and medical care that they can to address whatever your circumstance may be. And that, most people have that, I think all people have that expectation. You know, and I understand from the, from the medical side, I'm not a doctor myself, obviously, but I can understand if you, you know, invested many years of your work and your effort into your education to become a medical doctor. Anyone does. If you, you know, become an attorney, whatever the case may be, an engineer, you invest many years of your time and effort, money to become a professional. You certainly don't want that to be marred, and you don't want your credibility to be taken down, because it can be taken down very quickly. And even now, in this day, it's definitely of information, how quickly information moves, how social media moves information, you know, true, untrue, whatever the case may be, it moves quickly. It's kind of hard to correct if the information's wrong, but it gets out there. And I understand the concern they're raised, that, you know, gosh, if someone's whole profession can be tarnished and they might lose the ability to perform their work because someone's made untruthful accusations against them. At the other end, from our perspective, our sense of where we have responsibility also is to our public, to our community. And when people make allegations, I mean, people might say, "Oh, it's an allegation." Yeah, it's an allegation, so it's determined one way or the other. But if you don't know if your case is being heard, you don't know when it's being heard, how decisions are being made, if there's no transparency in that process, then how do you ever know that you, as an individual who may feel victimized for whatever the case may be? How do you find resolution? And then more so, how do you address if you feel violated? Maybe it is a case of your medical condition maybe you didn't feel was properly treated, or as the Speaker had mentioned, the most recent cases that are also disturbing is allegations of sexual misconduct. And that's a work, gosh, how do you deal with that in a circumstance of which you are the most vulnerable, when you physically are dealing with your physical being? It's different from your car. Goodness, your car, you can talk about it, look at it, and whatever, but when it has to do with your physical being, your own physical body, especially allegations by women that, you know, a certain doctor in particular in this community may be abusing his position for his own, good Lord, who can even imagine what his purposes are if indeed these allegations are true? That's very, very disturbing. And we should not have comfort of circumstances like that happening in our community. And if they are, then by all means, they need to be properly reviewed, they need to be reviewed in a timely manner, and decisions need to be made. But you know, when victims themselves, when individuals that feel victimized, there's many circumstances we can look at, obviously, if you feel you've been victimized. It's a very uncomfortable situation to be in. And more so, if you're reporting it, and, you know, the officials that are supposed to be in a position to accept that report and process that report and then determine what to do and act on that report, don't do so, then an individual feels even further victimized. What recourse do they have? You know, a lot of people think, hey, if I'm not who's who and who's what in this community, who am I? You know, my voice and my concerns just get rolled over because I'm a nobody. You know, my voice and my concerns just get rolled over because I'm a nobody. But boy, if it happened to somebody, then oh, my goodness, oh, you know, the world moves for them. And we should not have that. We should not have that with regards to these boards that we've created, even though the board says, oh, you know, we don't have the resources. And I've sat through many of those hours of those hearings when we had the whole, you know, public hearings on medical malpractice. We don't have the personnel, we don't have the resources, we don't have this, we don't have that. But you know, those things are coming to light, and I'm glad the Speaker says they're starting to address that, but they're coming to light because complaints are coming out from members of the community. It's not come, the boards were not banging our doors down to say, hey, I don't, I need this and this and this in order to respond. And it's unfortunate that it has to come from a public side because I would hope those and the expectation, those that are in the medical community, those that sit on these boards, you know, feel that sense of responsibility. Maybe today, it's some other person being, you know, having a claim put against, maybe tomorrow, it's you. And so I think we want to ensure that there's fairness in this process, that there's transparency in this process, there's accountability in this process. Because if somebody's misusing their official capacity with one person, the odds are probably fairly good, just looking at patterns, and people all have habits and patterns, some are not so good habits, and they repeat them with someone else, somebody else gets victimized. And that just shouldn't be acceptable to us. And it shouldn't be acceptable to the members of the medical community that practice, that we recognize and hold in high esteem. These cases that we've heard, you know, it wasn't too long ago, what, a week or two ago on the news, a woman filed a claim against a doctor here, and I heard her voice on the news, and, you know, people go, well, you know, is that a legitimate claim? Well, she's making it. It's very disturbing, very disturbing. I'm sure for our male colleagues, what even more are the female colleagues that are here if we were in that circumstance or knowing any woman or anyone, any man, any, gosh, a child, good forbid, could be put in that circumstance? And then to not hear a response one way or the other and know that your cases are being properly handled and not knowing whether or not they're being properly reviewed and that indeed, if someone has misused their authority, that that's properly addressed? You know, it's the old story, Madam Speaker, always hear, oh, that person came from so-and-so and they were from somewhere else and they came to Guam. Why did they come to Guam? Normally, they have friends or family, everyone goes, oh, okay, that makes sense. Sometimes you got to wonder, you wonder, you know, has somebody come in, we've seen it, it's happened. You don't think someone's out here because they're running away from some other jurisdiction that perhaps they, I mean, we heard that with a psychiatrist at mental health or behavioral health, right? We heard that complaint, and that's going through the legal process. But we just have to ensure accountability. As with us, we're very public officials, very visible, good forbid, accusations get made against us, whether it's true or not, it's going to be the front page of the paper in every form of media, news, social media, whatever the case may be. Colleagues, I'm sure some of you, all of you, us who've been through that, who've been victimized by that, know what that feels like, and sometimes it's not pleasant, especially if it's not true. But, you know, it comes with a territory. And the same for those that practice in the medical community here, those that sit on the board, I'm hoping that as a result of what has transpired, feel an even greater sense of responsibility with regards to undertaking their jurisdiction in properly, in a timely fashion, addressing these issues to the level of sensitivity they need to. Because it's hard to say you're a victim and be put in that situation to begin with to become public. That's hard. And to be further victimized by the system, my goodness, what do you say about that? I think we all agree that's not acceptable, not acceptable behavior. And we should expect more from our professionals. I expected more. But unfortunately, if this is what we got to do to put these guidelines and timelines in place so that the medical board is responsible to the public and the constituency of which they serve, then so be it. If they want to continue to practice and be responsible here in our community. So again, I wholeheartedly support Bill 309 and thank the Speaker Terlahe for to continue to stay vigilant on top of this issue and apologize to all those victims out there that have been treated so badly and unfairly. We demand more, we should expect more. I don't think anyone else in our community would expect any less than that. So with that, Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to comment on this bill.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Perez?
I rise in support of Bill 309. I think it's very difficult for someone who's experienced any kind of traumatic malpractice, for that matter, to come before a board. I think it's the least that we can do to provide a report about the disposition or what was, how it was handled. You know, it's hard enough going there to make a claim or complaint, but I think we need to do our due diligence in making sure our community is kept up to date in how our boards have handled the matter or the complaints. And it's also very important for our community to know, you know, if the complaint is investigated and found to be true, you know, it's very important for our community to know that so that the misconduct is not repeated and it's prevented. So this is a really important bill and I rise in support. S. Mosse.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Anyone else wishing to speak on the main motion? If not, Speaker Terlahe, you may close.
Thank you. I just want to thank my colleagues who have risen in support of the bill and those who eventually vote in favor of this. I want to thank, you know, the HPLO for their continued work and cooperation, and this is a very difficult position that they are in. They are working for a board, and, you know, we want the board to lead. And so I want to commend the board for the efforts that they have taken recently and that it's my hope that we just keep this, that this will continue, that they will continue to adjudicate cases promptly, but as described in this bill, that those who are making these complaints, that they are notified promptly of any decision by the board in those cases. And I want to thank them for coming out publicly and to helping us to get, you know, to promote these types of measures. S. Mosse, Madam Speaker.
On the motion, Madam Speaker, to place on the voting file, Madam Speaker, on the motion to place on the third reading file, please.
I would again move to place Bill Number 309-36, as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture, to the third reading file.
On that motion, are there any objections, seeing or hearing? None. Motion carries. We're going to take a moment's recess.
We're back from recess. Vice Speaker Munya Barnes, you are recognized.
S. Mosse, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, if I may, Resolution Number 343-36 COR is introduced by Majority Leader Talina Cruz Nelson, Senator Chris Duñez, Frank Blas Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Tina Rose Munya Barnes, Clint Rigel, James Moylan, Sabina Flores Paris, Theresa M. Terlahe, Jose, Joe S. Augustine, Jose Pedro Terlahe, Mary Camacho Torres, which is relative to expressing the utmost support of immunity and size and lesseitude in Guam, the 36 Guam legislature for the passage of HR 6823, the Elizabeth Do Home and Community-Based Services for Veterans and Caregivers Act of 2022, which seeks to expand veterans' access to home caregivers by providing a critical investment in caregiver support of the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs. We can just set that aside, but not let it lose its placement after.
On the motion to set Reso Number 343-36 COR aside, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, again, just a motion to set aside Bill Number 219-29, 219-36 LS supplemental, as amended by the Committee on Public Accountability, Human Resources, the Guam Build-Up, Hogania Restoration, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, and Technology, as introduced by Senator Amanda Shelton, TR Munya Barnes, Majority Leader Talina Cruz Nelson, Senator Mary Torres, Senator Tello Tadegui, Senator Frank Blas Jr., Senator Joanne Brown, and Senator V. Anthony Ada, which is an act to amend Sections 41210A and B and to add a new Section 4121G, all of Article 2, Chapter 41, Title 17, Guam Code annotated, relative to the certification of a severe disability as an impediment to employment for individuals with disabilities. I'd like to set that aside at the request of the author of the legislation, Madam Speaker.
On that motion to set aside Bill Number 219-36, as amended, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. We are now on Bill Number 303-36 COR. Senator Ada, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to make a motion to move Bill 303-36 COR, as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, and Housing, an act to add a new Section 849.16 to Article 1 of Chapter 8, Title 1, Guam Code annotated, relative to designating a portion of Route 4 as Seven Heroes of Meloso Highway, to the third reading. I'd like to speak on the motion, please.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 303-36 would honor the heroes who played a big part in saving lives of many of the Meloso residents during the end of World War II. As you know, every year, we honor the memories of those who were massacred in the Tinta and Faja areas of Meloso. As tragic as the situation was, it would have been worse if not for the bravery of this southern Meloso residents who risked all to save the lives of fellow residents from being killed by Japanese forces. The men who we seek to honor were Jose S. Rages, Mariano Nangalta, Jose Nangalta, Juan A. Napati, Patrico Tyran, Vicente Meno, and Nicholas Chargaloff. And in light of their courage and valor in the face of death, naming a section of the highway after the seven heroes is a small recognition. We owe a great debt of gratitude to these brave men that can never be truly repaid. And I know there's, over the many years, Madam Speaker, we've all looked and we have attended many of the memorials during the Liberation Day festivities, and every year we have one that comes up or one that gets identified that there were an encampment here or they were massacred there. Up in Seguian, they identified another site again. So as the years go on, Madam Speaker, and I realize that a lot of our introduction of legislations to identify and recognize these sites perhaps are not always completely accurate, but we do try to find that center, that medium, so that we can be able to continue to memorialize those who have given so much. And as the years go on, we continue to identify additional areas, such as now the seven heroes. And hopefully, one day, we'll be able to continue to make corrections or make changes or additions to other areas. And I hope that, Madam Speaker, we continue to let our children and our grandchildren remember what our atrocities were here during the war. You know, I was just looking at a book from the 50th anniversary of the liberation, and a lot of the stories were published in that souvenir booklet, and I didn't see one published on the seven heroes. But as we go on, you see the works that everyone tried to do, everyone tries to do and put stories together or get accurate accounting of what happened during the war, and that's what we will continue to do and that's what we will continue to recognize. And like I said, hopefully, one day, we'll be able to have a complete accurate record and accounting of what happened during the war and all those that, in one way or another, had given their lives for the defense of our island and saving of our people. And I also ask my colleagues to please for their support on this legislation. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On Bill Number 303-36, as amended, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized? On Bill Number 303-36, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill. I think it's so important, after having attended the memorials in Meloso, you know, there are survivors of the war that remind us of the hardships and the bravery of these men in preventing further harms to the people of Meloso. I think it's important as, you know, to commemorate them, not just in liberation festivities, but also, you know, every day we go down to Meloso. You know, the bravery of the people there is, you know, it's something that we can look at as tomorrow's, that we have the power within us to stand up against such atrocities. And had it not been for these seven men, more harm and deaths would have come upon the people of the village. And so I think it's important that we commemorate their bravery as well as to also think about how can we heal from the war, World War II, and any subsequent wars for that matter. But I think when we drive down to Meloso, we can know that our people are resilient and we can fight against any injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Duñez, you are recognized.
S. Mosse, Madam Speaker, and I rise in full support of Bill 303-36, and I commend the author for introducing it. You know, it brings me back to a bill that I introduced earlier, and thankfully, it was signed into law for Brigadier General Ben Blas and renaming of Route 3. And the reason why I say that is just to kind of reiterate a couple of the comments that I made during that time. You know, whenever we do things like this, you know, of you know, of course, General Blas's career was, you know, extremely distinguished, and this one moment in time where these heroes stepped up, of course, is, you know, equally as courageous and commendable. But the thing is, is that what I always think of is the generations to come, the future. You know, when you affix a name, as many of the monuments that many of us even sometimes stop by and see on our way, taking family when they come and visit Guam, to go see the beautiful South, you know, when you see a name, a road named that, you know, some of our families will be bringing family members that probably have never been to Guam, and our children growing up on Guam, that when they go to Melissou, we'll ask the question, "How come that highway is named Seven Heroes?" And it'll be an opportunity for generations to come to discuss the fact that, as we talked about during the memorials, you know, through reliving those atrocities. I guess I wanted to say one more thing, you know, with the Memorial Foundation this year, it was just amazing to see all the young people out. And I guess that's why this is bringing that to mind in going around and seeing those young people that were doing their summer youth employment. To watch when the commemorations were being done and all the ceremony and, you know, the commemorations and all the discussion, you could see that they were very attentive and just taking it all in. It was just a wonderful experience. And that's, to me, this is the kind of thing that, when we do these things, it really just gives another opportunity for things that are so important to us and to our community that should never be forgotten. And that through the perpetuation of things such as naming, you know, small sections of road and the like, give that opportunity to perpetuate that constant reminder of what we've been through and the constant reminder of how we can get through things and life can go on and be better because of those who stepped up to do everything that they could to preserve life, liberty, and our culture. So I thank the good senator for introducing it. And I think these, like I said, are important things to do. And I look forward to voting in favor of Bill 303-36. Sisus Massey, Madam Chair.
Sisus Massey. Senator Tadegui, you are recognized on the bill.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in full support of this legislation. I think that during the public hearing, I was hoping to have, you know, people coming to testify in favor that I'm pretty sure after receiving the petition petition by those signing onto this bill to ask for the support of this body, to call it the Seven Heroes of Melissou Highway. And these names that are on there, you can tell they're from Melissou. You know, my grandmother is from Melissou. She's a Kanini. And I saw some of the names on the testimony, the Kandasu, Nagalta, Tyron, Napaty, just some of those, over 120 signatures, over 120 that want this support. You know, it's time we start naming our highways after our own people, those who fought for our island, those who kept the traditions of our culture in the forefront. I think this is the beginning, and I'm hoping that soon that we can name other areas to recognize the Chamorro people who stood in harm's way just to protect their people. And this is very touching, especially down south where I'm from. I think this is very appropriate. And hopefully, the stories will continue on. I know that a gentleman just wrote, who already passed away, Mr. Torres, I think it was, that wrote a story about the Tahita massacre that happened in Melissou. So the next time our young generation, our next generation goes, "Why was this highway named the Seven Heroes of Melissou Highway?" And that's basically what it is, to keep their memory alive. And hopefully, their parents will tell them the story of how brave these Chamorro people were. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the bill, Senator Brown, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I also rise in support of this bill that was sponsored by Senator Ada. You know, we often can forget our history, maybe unless we read it and we have an interest in doing so. You know, fortunate, many of us are still, you know, had the opportunity to either have some parents, others, in my case, grandparent, because I only had my grandfather who was alive. My grandmother passed away several years after World War II. While she survived the war, she certainly didn't live too many years after because of health-related issues. But you know, it's the younger generation, Madam Speaker, the ones that come after us that will not have that opportunity of having parents or grandparents and close family members that lived through the war simply because of time and a generation, obviously, that is getting up in the years for those that are still here and many, many, many of our family and friends who have since passed away who lived through World War II. And certainly, a time in our history that, you know, it deserves to be remembered, what our people went through. You know, our generation now, we live in such comforts, many of us do. Air-conditioned houses, our cars that, you know, drive us from one place to the other. I mean, when my mom would talk about stories or my grandfather talked about stories of moving from Agania to Sinahania after the war and walking all the way to our family property in Maga to farm, you know, I'd drive that in a matter of minutes, and I can't imagine the thought if I had to walk that because we're, you know, I kind of think us younger generation are not made of the same steel. My grandfather, height-wise, by the time I was 13, I was taller than him. He barely reached the height of my shoulders. And yet, wow, talk about their endurance, their strength. You know, to live through all that atrocity and bring their families as best they could through that whole process and survive that, that's incredible. I don't even have that capacity. And a lot of our younger people who grew up in comforts that don't even know how to go out and work outside in the yard or rake or things our parents made us do growing up, have no idea, have no clue the path that our people have gone through that have come before us. Yes, the greatest generation, certainly far greater than many of us. And the efforts to recognize that so that our younger people, those that come to Guam, those that visit our island, will be reminded of that. You know, during the recent ceremonies we had for liberation, many, I know, Madam Speaker, you and many members here attended, you know, some of those stories even I didn't know. And I've lived on Guam not all my life, but I've lived here most of my life. And you just go, "Wow, that's incredible. Our people survived through that. That is absolutely amazing." And I think that teaches us lessons, you know. We think our burdens are heavy. They're nothing in comparison to what our people went through during that time. And certainly, to recognize those as identified here by our good Senator, Senator Ada, to memorialize that, to formalize that in our history, in our memories, to have their names remembered, repeated, to have their story told, is a very good thing. And it's something that we need to do. You know, as they say, you don't know where you're going if you don't know where you've come from. And in this particular case, putting this legislation in place will help remind all of us where we've come from. So thank you again to Senator Ada for introducing this legislation, and I know we'll all fully support it. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much, Senator. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise in support of this measure and thank the good author from Sinahania for introducing it. You know, Madam Speaker, there's a saying on the Menengan Memorial Monument that says, "Forgiveness wipes away the tears of war, but we shall never forget." In this effort, as I know the good author has shared even during the public hearings, that nearly 50 Chamorro men and women were massacred during the Tinta and Faja areas in Melissou and that there were seven brave men who risked their lives to prevent further murders of their fellow villagers. We know that there were so many camps around the island during World War II, a war that our island of Guam never asked for, a war where our brave Chamoros literally tried to stay together. It is witness that through this event, these seven heroes, Jose S. Rages, Mariana Nangalta, Jose Nangalta, Juan A. Napaty, Patricio Tyron, Vicente Menno, and Nicholas Chargaloff, those men were brave enough to give up their lives so that others may be spared. That is something that we, as an island, should never forget, never forget the brave men and women who literally thought of their family members and others that they would give their life so that others may be free. And to name a part of Route 4 in honor of these seven heroes of Melissou, I think is the least that we can do to honor their memory, to honor their bravery, but more importantly, to honor their family. So with that, Madam Speaker, I stand before you to say I support this measure, and I ask the rest of my colleagues to please do the same and support this measure on behalf of the seven heroes, but also the village of Melissou, and continue to honor the memory of those who suffered the atrocities at the Faja and Tinta caves. On, Duncan, and Sisus Massey, and then Senator Massey for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Sisus Massey, Vice Speaker. On the bill? On the bill, Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I have an amendment. I think they're processing it right now, Madam Speaker. So this is a short recess until they finish processing. It's a very short and easy amendment.
From recess, we last left off with Senator Joe Sinagustin, who wanted to proffer an amendment. So Senator Sinagustin, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I know that some of my colleagues said that upon, when the bill is passed, it's automatically upon enactment. But just to make sure, the amendment is there. Effective date, the act shall be effective upon enactment. And you know, I rise in full support of this bill. As a matter of fact, the author of the bill and I were talking about and trying to figure out a way how to fast-track this bill. And it was only a matter of time that we would get to it. And, you know, for some of them that have history, I have a little history, and so does Senator Pedro and I. When the police force were assigned down south, it was very versing in the folks that are down there. The mayor today is my wife's cousin, and on the list, they identified a Chargaloff. So there is family ties down there. So with that, I stand in full support, and I hope that all my colleagues will just support this, and let's move on. It's talking about recognizing the people of Guam that have suffered. Thank you.
You're very welcome, Senator Sinagustin. At this time, on the main motion, I'll recognize Speaker Theresa on the main motion. You may proceed. Oh, I'm sorry. On the amendment, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, thank you. Motion carries now. Speaker Terlahey, you are recognized on the main motion.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thanks to the colleagues who preceded me in commenting. Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thanks to the colleagues who preceded me in commenting on this bill and really paying tribute to the people of Meleso, the heroes of Meleso as the bill names them. And, you know, when I first heard this story, I just want to say, this was a story that was told by Tomas Barsinas at one of the events of the Guam War Survivors Foundation that held at the cathedral after Mass. They had these survivors tell stories. And Tomas Barsinas stood up, and I'll never forget him because I owe him so much for knowing this. It changed a lot of me, where he said, yes, you know, we were punished and all these things happened to us, but we were also, we saved ourself. And he wanted that to be part of the story. And I'm so proud to know that story. I'm so proud of the people of Guam and all they went through and all they did to take care of each other. And this is like the ultimate example of that courage and that community and family before self that was evident all across Guam and especially in Meleso. Meleso suffered greatly during the war. They had been witnessing cruelty, suffering deaths, and right before this heroic event was massacres. And when they described, when those who survived described who were taken for the massacres, it's so troubling for us or for me. They said they took first those who were smart and rebellious and were, you know, trying to outsmart the Japanese to survive and to help the community to survive. Then they took the biggest. They took the strongest. And they took them and they killed them, many, many of them. But what we have learned is such a great thing that happened was that some survived those massacres. And also, while they were presumably planning for a third massacre up there in Atati, we have these heroes who stepped up and saved the rest of them, saved perhaps additional massacres from occurring because they seemed to be methodic about it. And I want to read an excerpt from Guampedia, just to put on the record again, like the sentiment of those who were involved. But first, I want to recognize and thank the mayor. It's the mayor of Maritso who, I mean, the people of Maritso, since after the war, had had a monument for those who were massacred. They put them at the church. They put their names. We honor them every year. And at the pier, they also recognize all their military, the different military divisions, and they recognize the heroes of Meleso at the pier as well. I believe there is an inscription there with a name plate in front of the San Dimas Church and in front of the pier. And the names as read earlier, I'm just going to repeat them, were Jose Soriano or Tonku Rages, Mariano Nangalta, Jose Juan A. Napati, Patricia Tyron, Vicente Meno, Nicholas Chargeloff, and Jose Nangalta. In addition, so when, there was also a book written by Jose Torres. He was used to be the, for a long time, in recent years, he was the, I'm trying to remember the name of that program, but on PBS, on the, I mean, on, I'm sorry, on the radio station at UOG, where he played classical music. He loved classical music. And I remember one time, they interviewed him on his program. It was one of the federal, I mean, national programs interviewed him about his experience during the war. So there was an account of that. There's also an account of part of these in the war in the Pacific records, those men in particular who got on ships and went out to, and were picked up by the big US ships at the time. But, so Jose Torres wrote the book about Atati, about what happened there. And it was a really, I love that book because the beginning of the book describes Maritso. It describes Meleso, and it describes the life that they had there, from farming, you know, from what they did in the mountains to the valleys to the ocean. And when you talk about this ridge-to-reef conservation, that is the perfect book to read if you want to know ridge-to-reef because he describes it there, and I really liked that part of it. Of course, that's the peaceful part. And then he describes the pain that they were all going through, the suffering, how he watched. And really, it was embedded in his heart what had happened to his grandmother, you know, the cruelty and the lack of food. So I want to just read these excerpts from Guampedia. Meanwhile, thousands of villagers were ordered to march to Manengun where the Japanese were incarcerating Chamoros to prevent them from assisting US forces. In Meleso, people gathered their belongings and the Japanese made them leave food and other items at Titigano. After about three days' march, they were encamped for the night at Atati, up the Geys River Valley. Torres, Juan Cruz, and other boys earlier that day were sent back to Meleso to forage farms for chickens, pigs, and vegetables, whatever they found they were to bring to Atati. Meanwhile, Jose Soriano Rages, this is Tonku Rages, and other men were ordered to go to Titigano to also retrieve some food for the people at Atati. But at Atati was a large pit that villagers were earlier forced to dig. Juan Cruz said, quote, "My God, it was big, 50 feet by 50 feet square. I was forced to work there one day and I helped dig some of that hole," unquote. Rages, who had heard through the grapevine the massacres at Tinta and Faha, was convinced that the pit was for the Meleso people now at Atati. He recruited five men, some of whom were very scared, to attack their guards at Titigano. Despite being unarmed, they succeeded in killing the guards and taking their weapons. Shortly afterward, arriving at Titigano were Cruz, Torres, and other boys carrying food from the villagers' farms. Injured in the brief fight, well, killed in that fight was 16-year-old Gregorio Santiago. The bullet that hit the Japanese went right through him and hit Gregorio. Also injured in the fight was Jose Gurito, who received a slight bullet wound on one of his elbows. The fight over, they traveled toward Atati. Just before the camp, Rages stopped the men and boys, who numbered about 15 or 16, and began planning the attack. And Cruz said, according to Cruz, "Rages assigned the men to different parts of the camp, telling them to kill the Japanese guards. The key to the attack was seizing the rifles of the guards after they had stacked them. At the sound of the signal, with only Rages armed with a gun, the men attacked the camp with sticks and crude clubs." "We fought them with our bare hands," Cruz said. They managed to kill maybe eight guards, but not before one of them shot at Rages. He had his rifle behind some boxes and he shot Joe Rages, though the shot missed him. Unfortunately for the guard, the time he was trying to shoot Rages, the leader was hurriedly showing another man how to load and shoot a rifle so it could be used in the fight. Quote, "He was still behind the boxes, but Joe just picked up the rifle he had and shot him. I think he shot him in the heart," Juan Cruz said. Torres said the attack on the guards at Atati was something they just had to do despite their fear. Quote, "We had never done anything before until we thought they were going to kill us, kill us all. It's either them or us," unquote. Only one Japanese guard survived. He fled into the jungle. And after the fight, the Meleso men regrouped. Jesus Cruz Barsinas was in the jungle gathering food, but hurried back to the camp when he heard shots. He was told the reason for the attack was because the Japanese were thinking of killing all the villagers there, thus the reason for the pit. Jesus Barsinas then asked for volunteers to go out to the ship so we could get help for the people in the camps. And as I said earlier, there's a long story here in Guampedia about their saga from then to the ships and actually even, you know, after they arrived at the ships. And I encourage everybody to read these, to feel what they felt. The fear is really something. And another thing that Jose Torres wrote in his book was what really was instilled in his heart at those moments was the cruelty that they had endured and that they had witnessed their family endure even more. And so these men, and I wanted to read their names as well, because Meleso was full of heroes. And they, so these men, you know, made a group and went out to sea on a canoe. And of course, to get on this canoe and it was to get past the Japanese, get on the canoe, have what they needed on the canoe, repair the canoe, all of it is described here. And they went out into the Coco's Channel. I'm trying to see the names. I had the names, sorry, just one second. But then again, there was a second canoe, and the second canoe had five more men from Meleso. Unaware, I mean, these men were not aware that there were any survivors to Tinta and Faha. So on the second canoe was Jesus Cruz Anderson, Tomas Tahaji, Felipe Santiago Cruz, Jesus Cruz Castro, and Mokin Cruz Barsinas, who was the youngest brother of Jesus Barsinas. All except Castro, who joined them later, had survived the massacre at Tinta. That's what they did. They survived that massacre and then they went to try to save their people. Days later, after the two groups were taken ashore to hog it, four more Meleso men on a canoe were found, Frank Anderson, his son John, Joe Mansipit, and Joe Caneni. The four men from the second canoe had lived also to tell about the massacre at Tinta. But those, when Jesus Barsinas, who was in the first group, did not know that his brother had survived. So the quote from Juan Cruz is, quote, "Jesus Barsinas was shocked because he knew his brother was at the cave in Tinta. He didn't know his brother was alive. He looked down and saw his brother was still alive. He was crying, and when his brother got up top, they started hugging and crying," unquote, from Juan Cruz. And I just wanted to read those parts, and just if you could give me one second, I would really like to list those who were in that first ship. But they were, they were part of the group, I think, that we read out the names earlier including, so those seven heroes, including Jesus Barsinas and Jose Torres, who also went out on these canoes. And I just want to thank them. I want to thank them and all their families for what they did to us. They've changed our entire mindset, you know, in regards to, you know, what we can do, what we need to do for our families to take care of the people of Guam. And they really, you know, proved to all of us. And there were so many stories like this during the war, and I am just so grateful and thankful to them that they have inspired us in this way, that they literally saved so many people and that their story, their legend, will continue to inspire generations. They inspired me, hopefully, my entire generation, and I hope that they will continue to inspire generations. And that's the importance of this bill. In naming the highway, it will, it will be a very prominent reminder, a very prominent call to learn that story. And I hope it will make all the people of Meleso even prouder because they deserve it. And so I just wanted to say, Sijusmasi, to the sponsor of this bill and to all my colleagues in support of the bill. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker Terlahe. On the main motion, there's no one else to speak. Senator Tonyada, you may close.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'd like to thank all my colleagues for their input in, you know, the retiring speaker. And I think that's what it's all about, right? It's recognizing and memorializing and hoping that in the future, our future generations will continue to look back and see the atrocities that our people have been through. But yet, we're still resilient. We still continue to fight. We still continue to find that common ground that only we can find, you know? And it's great that stories like that continue to be told. And the story that she was reading, I saw that in the liberation booklet back in the 50th anniversary. So we just continue to memorialize and appreciate the history of our island and of our people. With that, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to make an amendment to add cosponsors. And we can just add Senators Sinagastin, Perez, Duñez, Titegui, Brown, Jose Pedro Terlahe, Vice Speaker Tina Munya-Barnes, Speaker Terlahe, and Senator Moylan to...
The sponsorship.
Sponsorship.
On that motion, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Senator Add on the motion to...
Thank you. I'd like to motion to place Bill 303-36COR as amended by the Committee on General Government Operations, Appropriation, and Housing to the, on to the third reading.
To place...
Down on the third.
On the voting file. Are there any objections to that? Seeing or hearing none? Motion carries. Colleagues, we are now, we're going to take a moment's recess to make sure that we have everybody listed on the different agencies to come in for the committee of the whole and just verify. So please bear with us. We'll take a moment's recess.
We're back from recess. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask that we recess until tomorrow at 9:00. I ask that we recess until tomorrow at nine o'clock and immediately go into the Committee of the Hall. So we will be addressing Bill 259, the following individuals have been invited, Mel Mendiola from GIDA, and Ms. Daphne Simsu from Department of Revenue and Taxation, and Mr. Lester Carlson from BBMR. And the only reason why we did not invite DOAs because Mr. Byrne is off island.
All right. So to clarify, it's a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Hall at 9:00 AM tomorrow and to take up Bill Number 259-36LS, 259. This is sponsored by Senator Telotitigui and others. All right? So on that motion, is there any objection? We're going to have to start promptly at nine because there are other events throughout the day that people might leave. We need to keep a quorum. So on that motion, no objection? Any objection? Seeing no objection. We're recess until 9:00 AM tomorrow. We will resume in the Committee of the Hall chaired by Senator Sinagastin.